The time is currently five o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and honors to the Texas flag. Please join me in the U.S. pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're going to start our meeting with public comments. So far I have three. Mr. Keith Gilbertson, if you'll stand to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, and go ahead and share with us what you'd like for us to know.
Keith Gilbertson, 13757 Dandelion Trail, Belton.
Thank you.
I'm the guy with the petition and we have, we're just wanting to identify one of the characteristics of the many that you guys are going to have to evaluate in the selection of our next superintendent. And what I thought I'd do is just to read the verbiage on this petition and then if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. We are proud and grateful for the strong school district that is educating our children and grandchildren to continue to be one of the most sought-after school districts in central Texas. We need a superintendent that will be conservative in outlook and not intimidated by the so-called progressive agenda. The Austin Independent School District seems to be one of the primary repositories for liberal activist agenda and these activists want to expand their initiatives to surrounding communities. Many Austin families are moving here and one reason is their dislike for the liberal influence that is being pushed into our schools. For example, their progressive views on gender and sexual identity under the guise of anti-bullying. These initiatives are driving families and teachers away from the AISD to other districts and into the private education system. We believe that the BISD's conservative approach to education is a huge part in the current increase in BISD enrollments. Please know that many BISD community members are very concerned about their children, grandchildren, and will not be intimidated, that we not be intimidated towards a liberal mindset for our school system. Children need to be affirmed that their value is based on their character, work ethic, and desire to become a good citizen. Our prayer is that the new superintendent will represent this mindset of our community.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jody, Dr. Jody Weeters? Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address, please.
My name is Jody Weeters. I live on 13702 Dandelion Trail, Belton, Texas. I have four children that attend BISD schools throughout the system, actually at three different schools. But currently, my role is as the Medical Director of Forensics for Domestic Violence and Violent Crimes through Baylor Scott &amp; White. We have been working on some grants that we are applying for, for basically approaching education for domestic violence, primarily focusing on crimes against women and disabilities. I wanted to kind of bring this before you guys. I didn't, I was going to send an email, I'm not sure exactly who would be the person to send this email to, and just to see what would be available as far as reaching out, as far as a collaborative effort between advocacy programs, counseling, possibly even reaching out to counselors, I'm not sure how this would work, about what does domestic violence look like for the victims that we see, non-fatal strangulation. I think what we've seen a lot is that these kids grow up in home where they see domestic violence and they don't know how to get out of it. I think this also leads to human trafficking, sex trafficking. I know just in this area, sometimes you think that you're not affected by it, but we see a lot of victims of this here in Belton, Temple, Colleen, this whole area. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out. I did put my email address on there.
Yes.
I thought there were multiple different avenues for education. We also have multiple sexual assault nurse examiners who are forensics qualified to reach out. We have a large, so Dr. Green and myself are kind of the two physicians that do sex trafficking and then I mainly focus on domestic violence and violent crimes. My board certification is in emergency medicine.
Thank you for that information. We certainly have your email address and we'll follow up as soon as we can.
Perfect. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Matthew Urban? If you'll please state your name and address.
Sure. Hi, I'm Matthew Urban. I'm at 515 Kenny in Belton. Thank you for the time to speak with you and thank you for what you do for our kids. What you do matters. It really does. So I'm a volunteer youth leader with Vistika Community Church, Young Life. I'm not coming to you as an official representative of either of those organizations. This is me talking to you. One of my kids found himself in DAEP. So he was in DAEP for marijuana use, past marijuana use. So he should have been in DAEP, like, so that's, that's the thing. And this, what I'm bringing to you today is not about one student. This is a more global concern. So in, in this, he was, on December 6th, I believe it was December 6th, he was accused of taking bars. Well, the student didn't even know what bars were. So he was accused of this because he was lethargic in class and put his, put his head down on the desk. So the student, he hadn't taken bars, he didn't know what it meant. His parents immediately left work, they picked him up from school, they took him to the ER to find out why he was lethargic and to get him drug tested. So they spent several hundred dollars on medical care and the student turned out to be extremely dehydrated and completely clean, completely clean of drugs. So the drug test was, was negative completely. So on taking this news back to the school, he was shown video evidence of him taking acid in a school hallway. So that's a new complaint. Acid is new from bars or different things. He was told the suspension would stand. So the video reportedly shows the student reaching into his pants and wiping his nose. So if that's the case, it's not evidence, right? So in the end, his, the parents were able to connect with the acting superintendent to have this decision reversed. That's from what they've told me. So again, I only know one side of the story, him and his parents. I don't know the administration, that's what I know. But here's my concern, here's my complaint. So my, my assumption is the average student in DAEP is from a lower socioeconomic class than most of the district, or at least than the average of most of the other, the other two high schools. And doesn't have parents who can likely immediately leave work, spend hundreds of dollars on medical care, or find a way to connect with the acting superintendent. Those connections are kind of a privilege that people have, not a, not something that everyone has. So then that brings this question, is DAEP supposed to be restorative or is it supposed to be punitive? And I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what the, what the charter of the school is. I hope it's restorative, but it seems like in practice it might actually be more punitive. So I've had three of my students in the school this year. I've heard lots of reports of mistreatment by teachers and administrators, and not mistreatment in like the kind of abusive sense, but things that you would just be like, as a parent, you would hate to hear that teachers and administrators are saying to your students. One of the examples is a report that water fountains are turned off at most times of the day. I don't know if you know this and I don't know if this is true, but I've heard this from three of my students now, and that they're not allowed to get water at most times of the day. That seems kind of like a human rights issue there, so something that you might want to address. I'm sorry, I'm not emotional, I'm just nervous because I don't know anybody in this room. So the students in so, in these lower socioeconomic classes don't have the same voice that people in the middle class do. That's, that's true, we know that. So I'm speaking up for them. They wouldn't have a chance if they found themselves in the same predicament. And if they're suspended from DAEP, my, my guess is that the likelihood of them dropping out of school altogether is probably higher because you're at DAEP already, you get suspended from that, you're probably more likely to drop out. You guys have the research, I don't have that. But if that's true, if they are more likely to drop out, we probably should be pretty sure that they actually did what we're accusing them of before we accuse them of that. So speaking, and this is not, this is my hyperbolic statement to you, is every kid at BISD a winner? Or should we put an asterisk on our logo? So thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And I don't know if I'm supposed to do anything else here.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda, we are now going to go to board workshop and committee reports. We'll have Jared come up and talk to us, or Kurt, Jared's here, to talk to us about our 2017 bond and construction project update. Good evening, Mr. Jared. How are you?
I'm great. How are y'all doing?
Good. Did you wear a scarf and a knit cap? It's cold out there.
I did not. Actually, I wasn't wearing even the jacket earlier, so. But ironically, I'm from Texas, but I love the cold.
Gotcha.
But appreciate y'all having me here tonight to give you an update on the bond construction projects. Last month, we got to be able to actually walk out on site and Kurt was there to able to give you the report. So you saw much of the update that was here and that, you know, overall, the progress is we're kind of on the downward slope of the hill as we're going through there. Progress is taking a little bit longer on there, on the, on Lake Belton High School, but they're continuing to finish things out. So right now, they're 80% done and you see that progress here on the screen overall. And there's some subtleties as you go between the photos and really look at that. Predominantly, they're working a lot on the exterior metal panel. That was the last part of the exterior to really finish up. And so then as you start going around the facility, you see here at the top left, the entrance to the student entrance, you'll see that actually between the photos that they're installing the metal panels there currently, that nice sink, getting that in place. They're rounding out the athletic fields and facilities. So they've started scheduling turf installation and that will start happening in early 2020. And then inside the building, again, their progress starts on the two ends of the building, the most complex near the performing and fine arts and the athletics. So of course, in the gymnasium, they had lights going in, those type of elements. But here in the center, you're starting to see those finished elements coming into place. So a lot you see there in the dining commons, they're really working on that rail that kind of surrounds that overlook. There's a great photo of where the display wall will go in board. Then as well, in the library that you see in the top right photo, that they're actually getting the drywall installed, starting to finish out what we call the porch, that is that little fringe of library that peaks into the student commons. And then as well, as we get deeper into the classroom wings, is really augmenting the finishes there. You see the, the wood elements that are starting to add that warmth, that touch within the design and finishing out the classroom commons there in the, in the neighborhoods. Just as an update in terms of the log, is right now, we've only had one additional change at this point, really surrounding adding some additional security cameras. So $19,000 is what that amount was for that's added on to the changes there today. Any questions on Lake Belton High School? Great. So Belton High School Orchestra, so a lot of visual progress you'll see amongst the photos, really getting the CMU installed, the structural steel up. This kind of shows all aspects of the work to date. And then really, as we're starting to roll in, they're really working to dry in the building. So starting to get the roof there in place, starting to work on the interior framing and the progress. So you'll see the MEP infrastructure is starting, some of the sound wall framing there in the bottom left, and then stretching out onto the canopy. So that one is almost approaching similar places like Belton High School. Little smaller, they can get there a little bit faster as well. So exciting on that one. We're continuing to watch all the details to make sure that it's getting installed correctly and oversight, working with the contractor to make sure they're on top of the nuances of construction. Same thing with Lake Belton High School. But ultimately, they're about 50% complete on this one, so about halfway there. So again, targeting both projects, opening here in about six months. So we're excited for that and starting to work through and supporting Belton through the furniture discussion and making sure that there's places for kids to sit there along the way. So with that, we'll take any questions you have overall.
Board, do you have any questions? Nope. It's all good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Mr. Ty Taggart is going to talk to us about the facilities committee and what good things we have there.
Well, we do. We have quite a few things going on. First thing here, at our last meeting, we discussed a request by one of our local developers to do a little land exchange with Temple ISD. And what I can report to you guys is we're not ready at this point to take any action. It's a complicated set of circumstances in doing something like this. And so we're, we're doing our due diligence, making sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted before we bring it to you guys. So that's what we have on that. The baseball, our baseball lights at our Belton High School baseball field have been in need of replacing for a long time. I know my son graduated three years ago and was a catcher and has the bruises to prove it. Pretty tough. So we've taken some bids and we'll have that at our next meeting to, to take a look at that, updating our lights. We've got some change orders that are coming and we'll have a little bit more of an update for that with the high school. There's always this constructions going on, there's, we see things, we need things, we hundred, you know, that huge 385,000 square feet, there's things as we move along that need to be added and change orders need to be put in place to make sure that everything's being taken care of from a legal standpoint, money standpoint. Something else we've got on, in the works is we are going to have vape detectors and we are already implementing this and these installation of these vape instruments will be coming soon. And so these are things where you can't have video cameras. These are instruments that can detect changes in the environment and can alert security to the fact that there's more than likely something going on that shouldn't be going on. This is a problem that we are having in our schools with these devices. Kids get sick, kids have things that they shouldn't be having and these are going to really help us hopefully start to curb this activity that really came at us pretty hard in the last year. So I just want to let you know, it is ongoing and we are in the process of putting this in place as we speak. So the thing I'm most excited about-
I just had one question about the vape detectors. Is that going to just be at the high school level or middle school or how far wide are we going?
Yes, at the secondary levels and it will be going across as we move forward, implementing it in those levels.
Additional question on that? Is that only for THC vapes or all vapes?
This is for the whole, this is for everything. It detects environmental changes, you know, in the, in the air, so.
Ty's right. They even detect light changes, like flashes of light, things like that. Our biggest issue with them is not the devices, it's the technology behind the devices and hooking it up. So we'll talk more at the facilities committee about how we roll that out over the next few months.
Yeah. But it even can detect motion by changes in lighting and things like that. They're very sophisticated. All right. Something else we did talk about was the, you know, obviously, we have to keep our finger on the pulse of our growth and our, we talked a little bit about our strategic planning for facilities, school buildings, you know, future things like that. So that'll, we'll bring more of that to you as we kind of investigate and keep, keep our, you know, keep, keep our eye on the growth. We've got to stay ahead of that. And then the thing I'm most excited about was the list that we approved, the three and a half million dollars towards, so they're a third of the way through that list already. I noticed we're going to have several things going on. David Bennett and the guys have got several things going on during the Christmas holidays that I'm really excited about. And so they are really moving forward with that list and I'm very happy, very proud of those, those folks. So any, any questions? All right. Oh, Chris?
I'm, I'm fielding a lot of questions. Oof. I'm getting a lot of questions about the potential land swap, right? So I'll sort of just ask a couple here and, you know, help me answer sort of what I'm hearing, right? And so the, the part of the land that we would potentially, or certainly are, right, is part of the track on hand, that's potentially part of the future elementary school site, right? So have we had our architect look at it, made part of this process to make sure that we have a command, you know, what that kind of does and what, if it limits our options?
There, there are two requests that, that have been made. One is the one that you're talking about, North Gate. And bear in mind that these are all discussions at this point in time and there's been nothing finalized. The one on the North Gate, the request was for less than acre, .945, something like that. And it's a little jut out and yes, we've asked Conal Robertson to take a look at that and to let us know if that would impede future building on that site. So we're waiting on that report. The, the second request was the swap that you referred to. The first one had nothing to do with the, with the swap. And on the swap, and I hate that word, but that's the word that's been used, it's to try to make neighborhoods contiguous within school districts, so that you don't have neighborhoods split either, and it doesn't matter what it's TISD, BISD, it could be academy or whatever else, but you don't have one neighborhood with multiple ISD serving that neighborhood. You know, we, we've had questions from the community too. We've uncovered our own questions at this point in time. So we're discussing this afternoon, we're going to take it one step at a time. We have a couple of things that we're working on right now. We'll get you all that information. Facilities Committee will be talking about that some more. And you can take as much time as you want to make sure that you're comfortable with it, or maybe you're not comfortable with it at a certain point in time, but, but we're trying to do due diligence on both. But those are two separate, completely separate items.
Like as far as the taxable value of some of what's going on, are we, I'm assuming we're working with the tax appraisal district and-
These are undeveloped properties. And so the appraisal district does not assign a value. And so what I'm doing this week is meeting with the local realtor to see if we can do a fair market value on those. And I don't even know if that will work. Again, these are completely undeveloped pieces of land, that's, that's part of the issue. So, and then the other part is, you know, we've talked this afternoon about can we, within the ISD, evaluate based upon surrounding properties that we do have an appraised value on? So again, that's one of those things that don't quite know how that will come out yet. It's on us, it's second thing, so, okay.
Thank you. Great discussions. Thank you, Ty. That was an excellent presentation. Our next item on the agenda is policy committee report. Presenter Emmanuel Alcozer.
I believe that the board operating procedures start off on page 16 of your packet. And can you continue through there? What you have before you is essentially a final draft. There's going to be some changes here or there, but I think in terms of the substance of the document, I think we're pretty much there. Maybe some grammatical things like on page one, which is page 16 of your packet. I'm just going to give you an example. Go down five, five lines after district, there probably should be a period and then the, it should start off with lead superintendent staff provide the leadership to accomplish the district's mission and annual go-through policy implementation. That's something that we added in our, in our first meeting. That's going to be part of the final document. A couple of, of talking points that I want to bring to your attention. On page 19 of your packet, which is page four of the procedures, where we've listed under opening of regularly scheduled meetings, HB 2840 information from Angela, I think that in speaking to Robin before the meeting today, it appears that I think Angela's got a handle on that and we're going to be adding that in our next policy meeting. And we'll bring it to you in January for final approval. At least that's the game plan at this point. One other thing, you know, we've had, we had three comments today from the public. If you look on page five of the, of the packet, or page 20 of your packet, page five of the operating procedures, at the top, the heading is Board Member Response to Public Participation section of the board meeting. Under the law, we, we have to give everyone an opportunity to be heard. Now, we can't limit comments to less than one minute. We've got five minutes in, in, in our proposal here. If anyone thinks that maybe we should shorten that or maybe lengthen that, I mean, we'd like to hear your comments about that right now, if you could. The other thing is that when we have our policy meetings, any public comments at those meetings is going to be limited to the agenda items. So if someone wants to come in and make a comment about something that's not on the agenda, at least at our policy meeting, we're not going to allow that. Now, the way we have it now is that anyone can, obviously the, the comments that were made today are not a part of our agenda, but we allowed that to, to take place. We can actually limit the public comments at our meeting, for example, today, we could have limited public comments to agenda items only. Now, I think historically, and of course Suzanne, you've been on here, I think, the longest, historically, we've always had it where the public comments could be basically on, on anything. They're going to be limited in scope in terms of time, but someone can come in and address us on any issue. Now, a couple of things about that. One of the things that came up during our discussion was, well, if somebody brings in something that's really hot in the community, something that's getting a lot of attention, do we want to put that on the agenda so that we can gather information? Information can be provided to us in the, in the form of a packet where we are actually have some idea of what the questions are and what the issues are before that, that item comes before us from the public? Otherwise, if, if we don't do that, then if someone comes in and it's a very hot topic in the public, they come in and they make comments about it, we're not going to be informed about the issue necessarily. And we may not be able, if we, if we're going to deliberate on something, we not, may not be able to deliberate that day, we may have to come in and address it the following month. So if it's something that needs to be addressed quickly, you know, we're not going to be up to speed on it. Just in my tenure, my short tenure on this board, I don't think that's ever come up. We've never had that issue. But that's something that we should maybe consider if we're going to modify this to say, well, and the only way to do it is to, is to make the policy whereby the public only addresses it on items that are on the agenda. So that's one of the, the points that we wanted to address with everyone and see if anybody had any comments about that.
So I have a question or a comment about the timing. The five minutes, I think, is adequate. You know, it takes a lot of energy and a lot of wherewithal to come before this board and to speak in a public setting. So if someone has made that journey here to talk to us, we ought to be able to sit and listen to whatever that is. Sometimes because they made that journey, they're here because it's very personal and it's, they're very passionate about it and they want us to understand where they're coming from. So I think five minutes is adequate. The other part about speaking to things that are only on the agenda and how do we get in front of that? Have you all discussed how that happens? A lot of times when things come before us in a public setting like this, we don't know until it's actually here. Sometimes there's rumor mill out there and you can kind of get it, but how do you get in front of it so it's on the agenda so that we have that to deliberate or talk about before it becomes like a level three, for instance, and we're talking about it in a closed session? Have you all talked about that?
Only along the lines of what I had mentioned to you. You know, if it's something that is obviously of concern to the community and then it becomes, it comes to us in the form of a public comment and we haven't, we haven't studied the issue prior to that, and then it's, obviously, we can't take any action on it until perhaps another meeting. I mean, that's, I think that's the only way that-
So as the proposal, I see we hear things here in the, from the public comments, to take that information and then perhaps study what the information was and make it an agenda item?
Right. Because, because in our, in our board operating procedures, we have it in there that it's standard where if there's an issue that we want to be put on the agenda next time, we just, we mention it at our meeting. You always ask that. So I think we can address it that way, but in terms of getting ahead of something, we may not be able to. But at the same time though, I agree with you, I think that the public should be able to come in and address this board at any time. I mean, I think that should be paramount to anything because we can always get up to speed. We just thought we would bring that to your attention because that's something we can do as a board in modifying this. We can modify, because we can modify it at any time. But I think in having the, the public address us on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not, I don't think it's of any, it hasn't been of any concern to us so far. In the event that that becomes an issue in the future, we can always address that. But we just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention to see if anybody had any comments about that as to how they wanted to address that. Now, if you, if you look at that, if you look later on in our procedures, it says that if, if a member of the public wants to address the board on an issue regarding finance, an issue regarding boundaries, those kinds of things, or any issue whatsoever, that they can just, that you can just come here. So if we modify page five, we're going to have to modify another part of the, of the policy, of the board operating procedures as well. But in my view, I think we should keep it as is. I think five minutes, Suzanne, I agree with you about that. Five minutes is, is, is good. Now, unless we had a packed house, obviously, we would have a, we would have a concern. But remember though, that, that we are having a meeting. It's, it's, it's a meeting in public that we're having. But remember, though, that we are having a meeting. It's a meeting in public that we're having. So just in my short tenure, we haven't had any situations where things have been disrupted, where we've had, you know, a number of people in here coming and addressing this, and this thing goes into the wee hours of the night. We've never had that happen. Maybe it's happened in the past, but it's never happened since I've been here. And Suzanne, I think that if I hear you correctly, you're okay with having people come in and address us, or the public come and address us on?
I am, and I have another question in relation to, I don't mean to jump in front of you. Just going back to what you just said about a packed house, five minutes is great, unless, of course, we have a packed house. So the way it was before is that there was, it was stated that there would be a representative of that group that would stand up and talk, since that's no longer the case. And so everybody would get their five minutes to discuss whatever they'd like to discuss.
There's also, and I want to say for the audience, the reason this is a discussion is because law changed. You know, we just had a legislative session, and House Bill 2840 was approved down in Austin. And with that, this addressed public participation during board meetings, and so that's why this is a discussion at this juncture. The two pieces of that law that are really up to local districts as to what they do is the timing, not that there is time, but how long that time is. And there were school districts and governmental entities in Texas that did not have public participation at all for board meetings, and that's really the reason this came to the legislature this last session. So everybody, you have to have public forums. The board can determine, as long as it's longer than a minute, how long that might be. And then the board can determine whether or not it's only on the posted agenda items, as Manuel said, or that it can be on any topic. If there is a huge volume of people in the audience, the law also says that the board president has some jurisdiction on further restricting the number of minutes per participant. So if you have, you know, fifty people, or sixty people, or whatever the case would be, you do have that option in law to restrict that in order to get through that entire group. One of the things the law did not want to do is to delay public comment to the end of the meeting, because they felt like that wasn't fair to the public, and we certainly would concur with that. So those are sort of the tenets of the law. Manuel talked about that, you know, this is a meeting in public, but it's not a public meeting, and you've heard that phrase before. So the law is kind of riding that line between making sure that your public is involved, but also not disrupting your meeting to the point that you can't have a meeting.
Thank you for that.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, to restrict it only to agenda items would really prohibit the public from speaking because, I mean, even tonight, the ones that we've heard, we couldn't, there's not, even if it were an agenda item, there would not be anything to discuss. It's something to, for administrators to follow up on. It's something for us to perhaps discuss in a closed session or something like that, but it's not really, it would almost never come up as an agenda item. And that's why we allow for public comments on any topic, so that they can speak as they choose to us, and we can hear, and then we can take appropriate action as needed. So I just think it's very valuable to never, never shut down that line of communication with the public.
And I think that was our consensus as well. I mean, obviously, the law, Robin, as you said, the law changed to allow anyone and everyone an opportunity to be heard. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other things we talked about in relation to this was trying to make it more apparent how you could go through the process of communicating, right? Because I think a lot of times we get questions, well, you know, somebody bring us a question or complaint, and they're like, I don't even know who to talk to, right? And so we talked about, what could we do potentially on the website to outline, what are the ways that you should go through and kind of get in touch with folks, and kind of laying that out for people to actually make it more accessible, I think, than what it is today? And so also as a way to help people kind of get in and make sure that they get heard.
I like the five minutes. I like the way it is. I would like to, for the president, maybe even for us to put this in the verbiage, to allow the people to know when they come up that we're not allowed to say anything or ask them any questions. That a way they know we're not being disinterested, we're not not wanting to pay attention or be a part of it. We're not allowed to. I'd like for that to be stated whenever they come up.
And Ty, you might want to tell them why you're not allowed to comment. I was going to say, why don't you tell them why you're not allowed to comment?
Honestly, I mean. It's just, it's part of the law that we're just not allowed to when they're up there, because then we're into a discussion-type situation. They're just allowed to come up and present their concerns to the board, and then we can see the need to put it on the agenda for further action. That's how that is handled by law.
Yeah, the part of law is if it's not a posted agenda item, and if you're talking about something, if you have someone on public comment that brings up a subject that is not on your listed agenda item, if you start commenting, then you break open Meetings Act. And so that's the main reason for not commenting back.
But just for them to understand that going, when they come up, that we're not going to not ask questions because we aren't concerned about their concerns.
It is on this page.
The other piece that I would like to see, going back to what you just said, Dr. Battershell, earlier about the board president having some discretion, if there's a large crowd, to then let them know that they may be, their time may be limited. So if we could maybe possibly put that, spell that out in here, that if it's a large group, then their time may be limited from five minutes to whatever that timeframe is, two minutes or something.
And you can, you can ask them, you know, if you're comfortable, then you can have a representative, but we can't force that in any form or fashion.
Right, right. Okay.
Well, Chris mentioned that we're going to, the idea, I think Deanna brought that up, and that there was a school district that had all those things on their website. So, I mean, that's an excellent idea, and then your point about, I mean, you can say it once, you can say it twice, you can say it three times, but the public needs to be aware that if we're not, as much as you want to ask them a question, because if someone is speaking, I mean, questions are floating through my head. You want to ask, you want to engage them. So the perception, of course, perception is reality, and perception is, well, these guys are not interested. It's not that, it's just that we can't do that. So Ty, that's a great point.
And I will say, that is stated here on, when they fill this form out.
Right.
It is on here, so.
They may not have read it, and I should have spelled it out.
I just think it'd be nice to say it.
I agree.
Okay.
Rosie, do you have any comments about our meeting? Anything else you want to add to what I've said so far?
I just wanted to reinforce what Chris had said. I thought a big part of the meeting was talking about educating the public on how they can approach us and what steps we can take.
Right, right.
And so, and I think as a part of that, that dispels any myths also about what we can or cannot do as board members. So I think we're at a good juncture to do that, so.
And maybe by utilizing all of our social media streams, other than just the website, just whatever streams we have out there to let them know that. That's good information to know.
Now, there's several, actually, we had a fairly lengthy meeting that day, but I think lengthy but productive. Yeah. One other talking point was selection of board officers, which is something that's been added here. If you look on page twenty-two of your packet, which is page seven of the Standard Operating Procedures, under selection of board officers, board officers shall serve for one-year term or until a successor is elected. Officers may serve three consecutive terms, except in extenuating circumstances determined by the board. I think the reason this is a talking point, number one, it's an addition. One of the comments was that you don't want someone to not want to serve in some sort of capacity as, for example, president, vice president, or secretary, and not to stagnate, to have, and to be training other people to do other things on the board. Now, we put three consecutive terms. Now, if that, if someone wants to go, wants to continue, or maybe someone else doesn't want to serve in some sort of official capacity, other than just being a trustee, we added, except in extenuating circumstances as determined by the board. And I think, Chris, I think maybe you or Rosie kind of brought that up. So we added that in there as a, sort of an exception to the rule. Now, does anyone have any comments about that, limiting, as far as board officers, limiting the terms, anything like that? Are you okay with what's here?
I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Taggart?
Maybe a little bit of a learning curve for the staff as we switch roles.
I just think that there could be an instance where you've got a good working relationship between a president and a superintendent, and maybe, maybe the cutting it off at three times may not be necessary. So that's good to have an addendum where if the board feels like that is a circumstance, we're really hitting on all eight cylinders.
Right.
You know, because sometimes, as we've, you know, realized over the last year, sometimes a lot of changes and things, it takes a little time to level those off. So at least there's something on there to where if the superintendent was to say, you know, I really kind of like the way things are sitting at this point, you know, at least we'd have that as an option.
And the other thing I think is that, I think, I don't think this group is a group that's going to stagnate in a position. I mean, I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, I think that we as a board and as individuals, we're always going to be moving forward, you know, doing the district's business and not just sitting back and let somebody else do that. I don't think that's going to be the case. Of course, I guess that could be with some groups, but it's not going to be with this one. So the way it's written, I think everyone is okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, Ty, I want to come back to your point with superintendents. You know, I've had the honor of serving with a lot of board presidents, and you form a very unique relationship with that board president, because they just know things that the others don't. I mean, they're kind of, you're peeing off people. But sometimes it's nice to be able to change those, because then you get to have that special relationship with another one, and that builds capacity within your board. So it's a nice option to have, but it does allow you to grow board members and to have a really strong whole seven, instead of maybe one or two that are seen as leaders. It allows the whole board to be seen as leaders.
Just one more comment about the procedures. Of course, we, I mentioned last time that we added a board ethics. Some of those things that are stated there, that's just the law. I mean, you can't get around that. We elected to put those in there, and there may be a bit of a redundancy here or there, but if you look at our policies and procedures with the district as a whole, some of these things are going to repeat themselves, because they're important. But putting them in one group in our Board Operating Procedures, it's a self-policing mechanism for us, I think, and for future boards, that those are the kinds of things that you're supposed to adhere to. I think it makes things go a lot smoother. There's a, the flavor to me of the procedures we have is to get everyone to speak up, have everyone listen to everyone else's opinion, and work towards a general consensus, and, you know, work off the collective wisdom of the group as a whole, as opposed to one individual dictating this or that. So I think that's the purpose, and I think all of these things tend to bring us to that conclusion. The other thing that we discussed is the reform of 114. Of course, Angela was at our meeting, and she was, we were going to table that, or retable that, so that she could have an opportunity to discuss those items with all of the department heads and the administrators, and get their feedback. Some of those things were changed. Obviously, we have to make it in line with what the law is, so she's working on that. And Robin, I think that you and Angela talked about it, and she's pretty close to having that done. So that'll be presented to us next time, so hopefully we can have, Angela, you think maybe in January we can present it as a whole? Okay. So we're going to present the Board Operating Procedures to you for approval in January, and then 114 will come to you in January as well. So any other comments about any of this?
I want to say thank you for the work you all are putting into this and the details. It's a lot. I know it's been a lot, and I know your meetings have been long. So thank you for really putting so much thought and care into doing it right, and really, over every word.
We can go through this, you know, just, and go through each of these headings, and there's things that are going to come up. So we could be debating this for a long time. So, Robin, it was a great idea to have these committees, because obviously it gets us into it a lot more in depth, I think, because we have the time to do that, and then we can come in here and discuss it with the rest of our group and get the feedback from everyone. So a good idea. I think it's working great so far.
On your Board Operating Procedures, those are to be reviewed annually per your policy. And so whether you do that in Policy Committee or how you do that, but make sure that that stays on your calendar. It probably won't be as difficult as it is this year, because it had been a couple of years that y'all had really delved into it, and so y'all have really torn it apart and looked at every little piece of it. And if you bring on a new, well, it won't be if, when you bring on a new school board member at some point in time, your Board Operating Procedures are your training manual for that new board member, because it's things you've thought about, that you have prioritized, that you think are really important to how this district operates. And so it is your tool to train that new person or people.
I've got one more comment. I want to echo what Manuel said. You know, being a part of these committees, allowing us to be, to sit in there with the leadership of our district and to really get our hands, you know, dirty and to be a part of the process. I want to thank you again for that, too. This has been a great experience so far, and I think it's helped us grow as a board and be more of a part of the, you know, the nuts and bolts of what's going on. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Real quick, I know you said thank you for, you know, the meeting and all that kind of stuff, but I got to tell you, I can't take any credit for any of this. And I'm sure the other board members may feel the same. I mean, it's really Dr. Battershell, Dr. Love Smith, and the whole crew that has really worked through, I mean, we looked through like five or six different school districts, you know, board operating procedures, right? And it's really them pulling some great examples for them to work through together, right? So while it's great that we're sitting in the meeting, you know, I think a lot of the heavy lifting really comes from Dr. Battershell and Dr. Love Smith and the rest of the team, and I can't thank you guys enough for how smoothly those meetings go, no matter how long they go. It has been great, yeah.
Yeah, and we always need counsel there, so, I mean, Angela was, well, you asked me that question probably two or three times, so I appreciate, you know, you being there and being accessible to us at these meetings, because obviously they have to comport with Texas and state, state and federal law. So we never want to draft something that doesn't purport to comply with that. And then, Robin, I think you've even discussed things with TASB. These are run by TASB. So, you know, there's a check and balance in the system, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that it complies with state and federal law.
And Emmanuel, you're talking about 114, you know, know that there was a massive legal section that Angela pulled out pieces, priorities, and went through that with the committee. And those will be in place as soon as they're enacted down in Austin. Those will come to you as well to be approved in January. The ones that Manuel is talking about right now, though, are the local policies that Angela's going to visit with staff on. So they always come, obviously, in those two pieces, and this is a massive 114, but you'll get both of those in January.
I think that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This is certainly proof positive that we're a board who are, we're working, we're getting things done. We're not just sitting up here rubber-stamping anything. We're actually getting in those weeds and getting those hands dirty, like Ty said. It's interesting, because Manuel said earlier that I've been on the board the longest, and I have. I've been on the board since 2013. And this is the first time I felt like being on the other side, on the administrative staffing side, to be able to look to see what's really going on underneath the hood, you know? So this is nice. It's nice hearing all these different updates. Thank you all for serving on those committees and just really hammering out all the information that we need. We've had some great, healthy discussions sitting up here, based on the things that you've reported out. So thank you all. Appreciate you. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, but I don't think we're ready. That's okay. We'll move on. We'll go on to our consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have any item pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve as presented? Yes, sir?
Sorry, there is with one amendment. On the, on page thirty, I'm showing us both attending the meeting and not attending the meeting. And so for the record, I was not at the meeting.
Oh, the correct, okay. Okay. Outside of that, is there a motion to approve as presented? That's Mr. Ty Taggart. Is there a second? Mr. Chris Floor, who is present, for all, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That passes unanimously. So we'll just move on to superintendent's report while we're waiting for recognitions.
If you will look on page seventy-four, it sounds awful, but seventy-four in your board packet, some pieces for you is, in front of you tonight was an informational flyer, and it looked like this, yes? And I think it looks very, very nice. I'm sorry. This is your flyer. I think it looks very, very nice. And I want to thank Kristy Shepherd and Elizabeth Cox for helping us put that together. TASB Business Recognition, the time is nigh for those recognitions in January. So if you have any businesses that you'd like for us to honor, then please, please let me know. TASSA Workshop, there are several of us attending that at the end of January. Underneath Finance and Operations. are several of us attending that at the end of January. Underneath finance and operations, again, baseball field lighting is coming to you in January. Belton High School furniture, uh, we want that furniture to be, um, as good as, I guess you look at it that way, as Lake Belton High School. You want them to be comparable, and so we are purchasing furniture. Thank you to Jennifer Land in taking care of that for us. Uh, above allocation requests, there are allocations each year, obviously, for every campus, and so, uh, at the middle of the, or near the middle of the year, Jennifer asked if there are any additional allocation requests, and those have been processed at this point in time. True-up, weird word, but again, at the beginning of every year, it's a guesstimate, uh, about what you think your enrollment's gonna be per campus, and then you base your, base your allocations upon that guesstimate. Um, at this time of year, after October thirtieth snapshot date, we know exactly what those enrollments are, and so if you have more students than you anticipate on your campus, then you get more money. If you're less, we do not take money away. Impact aid, that application is due January the thirty-first. You can read a little bit more about that in your packet. Budget update, you will receive one in February. Again, I want to thank Jennifer and her department for a magnificent job. Uh, walk-through, uh, Dr. Muller, David Bennett, and myself have walked through the different storage areas. We've also looked at the old administration building on Sixth Street for possible special education occupancy. It'd probably be great. I, I think it would take probably nominal renovation. The parking lot is the main thing. The parking lot is kinda torn up over the last couple of years. So, we're progressing with those.
Just for clarification, student, special ed staff, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just one more.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Good question. Um, BEX has requested additional parking. We think we have a plan for that. That's with Architect at this point in time. And then secured vestibule at the administration building, we've approved tho, those plans, and that should be going up pretty soon. It's not major, but it certainly will secure the central office building. Student services, smart tag, had a few bumps at the beginning. Most things do. Uh, long-term implications of this, I just did not realize until, um, Mr. Morgan talked through them, but obviously it impacts the safety on our buses of who's on those buses, which is important, and the efficiency of that. But also down the pipe, we can use that for cafeteria first services. We can use those for the library, and the hope is that we can have one card that kinda takes care of all of the services within Belton ISD. So, substitute teacher retention plans.
Before you go there, I just had one little comment about the smart tag. Uh, my son had one of those, and, uh, when he got it, he came home, he said, "See, I told you, the government's taking over. Now they're scanning me."
Oh, that's a new one.
Well, we don't want you to get lost, son.
No, no.
So, I'm glad we're doing that.
We haven't chipped him yet.
[laughing]
Uh, one of the things that we have talked about on the smart tags is, um, what the disciplinary measures would be if a kid chooses to pull their chip out of their card, which we've already experienced, and, you know, some of those other things that our brilliant children have, have decide, have decided to do or figured out. So, we will use the same disciplinary measure that we use with our transportation code of conduct for, for kids. Uh, underneath HR, substitutes are always difficult to find, that bus drivers. But underneath substitutes, Todd and his department have a, are going to give them a $500 bonus if they have taught seventy more, seventy percent or more days in the fall term. So, thank you, Todd, for taking that forward. Uh, total cost, sixteen thousand five hundred, and that's pretty nominal considering that covers our babies in our classrooms. Uh, House Bill Three teacher incentive allotment, this is a really controversial piece. The Bell County Superintendent's met again on Friday on it. Um, basically what it says is that the state is going to give a financial incentive to the, supposedly the teachers who are master teachers. They either pass a, a test or some proficiency exam. That money, though, doesn't just go to the teacher. It can go to the entire campus, and if the teacher leaves that campus and goes to another campus or another school district, the money goes with them. And so, that's left us with all types of equitability issues between different school districts. And so, the latest discussion was, you know, we, we need to, to compare notes on this one as we progress, this new, new incentive with the state. The other concern with this incentive with the state is sustainability of the funding. Uh, you know, House Bill Three was, was very nice to be able to be adequately funded. Um, however, there are lots of demands upon the funding that was allocated through House Bill Three. There were a lot of mandates within that legislation, this being one of them. So, we'll see whether or not that funding can sustain itself after this biennium and whether this is even still on the plate after that point in time. And then for the two football coach positions, we received ninety-one applications, and we have screened, screened those down. There've been already two sets of screenings at this point.
Did you just say ninety-one?
Ninety-one.
Nineteen-one?
Yes, ninety-one. Yeah, yeah. So, we're real pleased with that, and there were some very good applications in there. And so, um, at least personally, I, I was very, very pleased with the applicant pool. So, we did a paper screening, and we did that twice, actually, and there are some interviews coming up this week, and, um, then we'll narrow that down further and hopefully come out with some great people. Any questions for me?
Robin, what was the deadline on the, uh, coaching application?
We had one deadline, which I don't remember, but we extended that deadline because...
Because of the playoffs?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, the first deadline was kind of, I guess, through the, the first two rounds of playoffs, and we figured that some of those really, really good coaches may still be in the playoffs, and so Todd extended that, and so we truly have people that, we did have a few that applied after that deadline that had some really nice coaches.
Because I think the, the six A state championship is maybe this week, right?
They're all this week.
They're all this week?
Mm-hmm. But, you know, the, those that have those championship teams, uh, generally, unless they're a one, two, three A, they will probably remain within those districts as state championships. So, you try to catch them when they're in those quarterfinals and things like that because obviously they're very, very strong programs, they're very good coaches, and they may be kind of looking at that point in time. But you get a school district that has a state championship team, and they're gonna do whatever it takes to keep those coaches, unless, again, it's a one, two, three A, maybe a four, just because we're a six A district.
I have one, one question. If y'all bring that to us for the regular meeting in January, that would be on the twentieth. Would it be, benefit us any at all for the coaches putting their new staff together, getting their spring set up, to have a special meeting before that? I know we're really busy in January. Would it help out if we were able to do that?
Yeah, we talked about that, and we started looking at your calendar, and there was no more time on your calendars. That's kinda what it came down to. And so, and we knew that we were gonna have to have a round or two of interviews in January. So, I, I think twentieth will be fine. We can get them on board. You know, we want to, generally when coaches are hired, they come pretty quickly. And, um, so, you know, hopefully we can get them on board in February, maybe March at the latest, and they can start putting their coaching teams together. Calendar, calendar. Always forget that. Uh, it's in your board packet, and, uh, again, the areas that I, that we think that you would be most interested in are highlighted. Everything's highlighted. There's four things that aren't. Now, we can fill those if you want, Chris.
Awesome. Thank you. Elizabeth, are we ready for recognitions? Okay.
They don't look grand.
They do. That's amazing.
Because, yeah, we're awesome. That's because here with us, they know how to make a grand entrance.
Awesome.
Good, easy.
So, we're gonna, Elizabeth will get us started, and the board will just go down there and stand and pose with these great folks, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
First up tonight for recognitions, we have, uh, the Texas State Thesbian Festival. Thirty-one students represented Belton High School Theater at the Texas State Thesbian Festival in November, with students achieving outstanding distinctions among the more than eight thousand attendees. Nine students competed and received a superior ranking in individual events. Those students include Belton High School seniors Evan Taylor and Colton Beard, who competed in monologue, Belton High School junior Annie Bailey, and Belton High School senior Ethan Taylor, each for a, their musical duet, Belton High School sophomore Eden Iram, and New Tech sophomore Megan Sloan for their duet in musical theater dance. Belton High School senior Jamie Pearson received a superior in stage management, senior Kayden Massey received a superior in makeup design, and junior Bailey Dugan also received a superior in costume design. Seven of these students have qualified to compete at the International Thesbian Festival this summer in Indiana. Belton High School senior Ethan Taylor was elected last year, Ethan right here in, yep, as a, as a state thespian officer, and worked throughout the year as one of sixteen officers from across the state to prepare for the festival. During this year's event, Belton High School junior Annie Bailey was elected a set, state thespian officer. In addition to helping plan next year's festival, Annie will also teach advocacy and leadership workshops and junior festivals present, representing Belton High School in her capacity across the state. We are proud to have had three state thespian officers in three years. I'm gonna repeat that again. We've held a position, Belton High School Theater has held a position as a state thespian officer for the last three years. This was only the third time for director Melissa Stuff, who's also here with us this evening. Come on through, Melissa, and the Belton thespian troop to participate in this significant annual event. Congratulations, Belton thespians. Parents, don't be bashful. We'll get plenty of pictures if y'all wanna move closer. Y'all are good? Okay. Yeah. We'll also post them on the district's Flickr account tomorrow, and Facebook, and Twitter, and all those other important places. I know this group can smile for us for a good ten minutes, so we're good. I think we're, everybody's got their picture? Congratulations. Thank you. [applause] Once we let this crowd clear out, I think we'll see these folks back in January as we get a little bit of an introduction to and plug their, uh, spring musical. So, you'll recognize these faces again. Thank you, Melissa. Up next tonight is our Big Red Community Partner of the Month. Temple Elks Lodge number one thirty-eight has been and continues to be a strong partner of the district, living their mission of demonstrating that Elks care and Elks share. Annually supporting Red Ribbon Week, Elks provide the district with ribbons, bookmarks, and other instructional materials that support our efforts to promote both drug-free and anti-bullying messages to our students. More recently, Lodge number one thirty-eight has gone above and beyond in its support of students participating in Project Heartbeat, Belton ISD's program that meets the unique needs of homeless youth in our district. And we have Christina Wilson here with us tonight, the director of Project Heartbeat. In August, the Elks hosted a back-to-school summer cookout and swim party for students and families in the program. For the more than thirty Belton ISD students in attendance, Lodge one thirty-eight provided a backpack filled with their grade-level school supplies. Entering this holiday season, Lodge one thirty-eight stepped up in a big way to support Project Angels Heartbeat by filling the Christmas wish list and clothing needs for more than forty of the one hundred and thirty-five students participating. Again, that was forty of the one hundred and thirty-five students participating will have Christmas gifts thanks to these fine folks. For their continued support of Belton ISD and significant generosity this holiday season, the Temple Elks Lodge number one thirty-eight is this month's Big Red Community Partner. Accepting this award tonight, we have Milt Burns, Travis Smith, Andy Odom, Bonnie Wilson, Karen Stagner, and Shawna Sheeble. Thank y'all so much. [applause] More than forty of the approximately one hundred and thirty-five students. If y'all have a different count, I know Christina's still been dishing out a couple of other kids, so what the last count was, more than forty, uh, Christmas wish lists were filled by the Temple Elks Lodge. Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all. Congratulations. Appreciate y'all. We'll get you a picture tomorrow. And, and that's it for tonight. I'll see y'all in January.
Did we lose Mr. Ty?
Did you get cold?
Okay. All righty. Moving on. That's amazing. Y'all did a great job. Thank y'all so much
for that. Uh, next item on the agenda, finance and operations. We're going to talk to Ms. Paula Lau. She's gonna talk to us all about our, our comprehensive annual financial report. Looks like Ms. Jennifer will be joining her. Awesome. She's got some things to give to us.
Noon. Good evening. I'm Paula Lau with Patillo Brown Hill, and I'm here this evening to present to you the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Um, I believe each of you did have, um, a copy of this report in your board packet, um, a draft of it, and, um, there weren't any changes that you see that you're getting tonight compared to that draft and the final copy that you have in front of you as well. Um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit, um, about our audit process, um, some of the results of the audit, and then just give you a few highlights, too, uh, that are included in this annual financial report as well. Um, we have a group of, a team members, uh, part of our audit staff that come out, um, to the district for a couple of weeks during the summer months, and, um, look at internal controls and processes the district has in order to make sure that this information gets into your report, um, this evening. And, um, as a result of those processes and, and looking at the detail of that information, uh, we perform a risk assessment, and based off of that risk assessment, we come out to do final field work in the month of, um, October. Um, it helps us to design the, what we really want to look at in a little more, um, detail. Um, and a part of that is just, you know, looking at a lot of invoices, um, talking to, uh, the district to get an understanding of, of what's going on throughout the year, and, um, also, too, just asking outside entities, okay, what do you think these balances should be? In particular, uh, like your long-term debt, your bonds, your cash balances, a lot of those things. We're even getting information from outside entities as well. Um, but that's a little bit about how our audit process, um, works, but as far as like, um, some of the, of the highlights within the financial report and results of our audit, on page one of this particular document, you will find our independent auditor's report. And basically, what this report says is that we have audited the accompanying financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards, and those standards require that we plan and form the audit to attain a reasonable assurance that these financial statements are materially correct. And we were able to render an unmodified opinion, and an unmodified opinion is the highest opinion that can be rendered, is known as a clean opinion to most individuals as well. So, um, great job for, um, members here, um, of the district, uh, for getting that as well.
It's always good to hear a clean report and findings. It's awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, on page fourteen of this document, you will find the balance sheet for the governmental funds. Um, there you will see, um, for the balance sheet for all of your major funds as well, um, for all of your governmental funds. At the end of the year, you can see the governmental funds had approximately a hundred and four million dollars of fund balance at the end of the year on page fifteen. Uh, making, um, up that balance, you had approximately fifty-four million dollars of capital projects fund balance, and basically that's some unspent bond proceeds that you still have to finish, um, some projects up with. At the end of the year, you can see the general fund has approximately, um, forty million dollars of fund balance at the end of the year, and what, a lot of times what we like to do is compare what that ending fund balance is compared to what your current year expenditures are. And that fund balance is compared as a percentage of general fund expenditures is about forty percent, uh, or almost five months of your general fund expenditures. And then on the signed fund balance there in your general fund was thirty-eight percent of your total, uh, general fund expenditures, or four and a half months. A lot of times, um, like, uh, a rule of thumb or a gauge there, we like to see approximately three to four months of total fund balance, uh, for your general fund. So, we're definitely do have, are somewhat within that range as well. Uh, flipping through the reports, um, you will also see, um, an area that we always talk about, too. It's the federal awards section of the report, and basically there you'll see two more reports that we're required, uh, to issue as auditors. I do believe it's on a hundred and one. That's where you see the start of that. That's where you see the start of that. And basically, what kicks off of us having to issue this section of the report is when a district or an entity does expend more than $750,000 of federal awards, then we're required to look at compliance auditing for some federal programs. In this particular year, the program that we had to look at was the child nutrition program. I'm happy to say, we have a clean report to bring to your attention and issue here as well. So we don't have any type of findings or material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to bring to your attention for federal awards or your financial statements as well. And you can see on page 108, it's referred to the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost. But what this basically is though, is a nice summary of this report that I'm bringing to you today. It's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, the material weaknesses for your federal programs or your financial statements as well. But I don't know if, how much each of you were able to look at the draft before this evening, but this is a comprehensive annual financial report. This is a little bit different than what this district has been receiving in the past. It has additional information here, different sections within this report. If you look in the introductory section, you'll see an additional letter there that does provide more information about the district to the users. And also too, towards the back, you see the statistical section as well, where there's a lot of trend information and analysis that, it's probably my favorite section of the report, even though it says it's unaudited, there's a lot of great information in there as well. But, and all of this information is provided to you today just because Jennifer Land and her group that able to get all of this information and gather it and be able to provide it to you as well. And then the next step with this comprehensive annual financial report is to send this off to an agency, the Government Financial Officers Association, and ASBO as well, the Association of School Business Officials International, and with hopes of getting an achievement award for this report as well. We know the requirements that the district does have to meet to get those awards, and we feel like that these, this document does and can receive that award as well. So this is great news and a great achievement for the district. So, but definitely, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Does the board have any questions or comments? No? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to the leadership that we have, if that takes good care of us. This is always good to take this to our stakeholders, this type of report. And we are blessed to have the individuals we have on our staff. So thank y'all so much.
I just want to echo what Ty just said to Jennifer and all of the BISD leadership as far as this report is concerned. And thank you for always just bringing us this good information. Historically, BISD has had a clean audit. And so it's just, it continues. This is being good stewards of our dollars and our community looks for us, to us, to take care of them financially and make sure that we're being good stewards of the dollars that they have placed upon us. So thank you. What we'll do now is take some action. The administration, administrative recommendation is to approve the comprehensive annual financial report for the 2018-2019 school fiscal year. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Jeff Norwood, is there a second? Mr. Chris Floor, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda is Dr. Deanna L. Smith. She's going to give us a pre-kindergarten update.
I sure am. I'm very excited about this. We talk a lot about accountability in the district, and that often does not include our four-year-old program because it starts often with star scores. And so tonight, we're going to talk about pre-K, which does serve our earliest learners. Just look at those cute little faces, our four-year-olds. And our enrollment is at the highest level we have ever seen in Belton ISD. We currently have 493 students in pre-K. That is over 100 students more over the last five years. So that is a tremendous amount of growth. We're seeing them at, right now, at about 70% free and reduced lunch. Remember, if you do qualify for free and reduced lunch, you can attend pre-K for free. You can also attend if you're an English language learner. That represents nearly 12%. I thought, yes, 12% military connected, which right now is at 21%. And that's important to note that within two years, that has increased from 13% to 21%. And we are seeing more military. Our population is growing. Also, the word is out that they can attend for free. And so we're seeing that population increase. We have about 6% tuition-based. That's about 34 kids. We've stayed about at that. And that's a good number because that's, they're paying for themselves with tuition to provide a teacher and an aide for those classrooms. And then we have about 2% in foster care. Foster care is also able to attend for free. I skipped over special education, but that has increased, and we are seeing a larger number. We're actually seeing special education population increase across the district. A lot of things we think are going to that. At pre-K, I'll tell you, we serve a lot of kids in speech. So a lot of kids we identify at three and four for some speech needs. We've also had entered into some conversations with our local hospitals and the fact that our healthcare is improving as a nation, is allowing kids to live longer. And maybe, and we see those kids in our four- and five-year-old programs. One thing I wanted to point out on the growth of this, this is, like I said, our largest population. That follows the information from our demographers. They told us that next year, we would possibly have a record-high kindergarten, and that is because 2014 was a higher birth rate in Bell County. So we're seeing that come true in our pre-K. We do charge tuition if you do not qualify. That has been a great asset to the program. Most of it is our employees, although we do have some community members. We charge $475 over 10, per month for 10 months. That is about what, it's a little less than a daycare in the area. Of course, we do not provide after-school care. So we have a certified teacher and an aide in the classroom, which produces a quality pre-K program. And then we do allow kids to take a bus to their home campus if a teacher is there. And so it's been a nice benefit for staff. It is a new day in pre-K. They have standards and they have high standards. You do not just come and play. You not color. You do color some, but it is much more robust than that. We have significant programs that we use that align with our curriculum, but pre-K has domains in which they're measured on. So their social-emotional development, several of you came on a tour and saw that with their rituals in the morning, their classroom routines, their welcoming their friends, language and communication, literacy, writing, math, science, social studies, fine arts, PE, and technology. So they have required curriculum and teaks and expectations in each of those levels. Now, I have some hot-off-the-press numbers, so fresh, it didn't get it, I didn't have it before the board packet. But the state came out for the first time with kindergarten readiness data. And that's going to be in our taper report, which you'll receive a full report of in January. But because it's just so applicable to tonight, I wanted to include 79.7% of our kindergartners are ready. When we test them, they're ready for kindergarten at the beginning of the kindergarten year. That is compared to 52% at the state level. So our kids come kindergarten are ready. Now, how does this compare for pre-K? 85.9, I'm going to chills. 85.9% of our kids who attended our pre-K are ready for kindergarten. 85.9% compared to the state's 52% rate. That speaks volumes for our pre-K. So excited. The other thing that's very significant about that number is that 85.9% compares to 86% of the kids who come to kindergarten who did not attend pre-K. We closed the gap. And that's important because pre-K is an investment. It's an investment our district has made, and those teachers work hard every day with those kids. So the numbers show that.
Deanna, so the question is, how do we get more kids in pre-K?
Well, so we actually have, are exceeding, and I should have brought that number, it'll be in the taper. We exceed the state percentage for who is attending. We continue to recruit, but I have that number and I can get you because it was just released, the percentage of our kids that are eligible that are attending, and then the percentage that are just, could attend at all, yeah, the eligible ones. We're at, I think it was like 70%. It's higher than the state. I do know that.
What's our capacity number at BECS?
Oh, I should know that. I think it's, I'm not 100% sure.
You can share it out later.
I can get that to you.
You can put it in a report.
I want to say it's 600, but I'll make sure.
Friday report, that's fine.
We did, that team does active recruiting at several festivals in the spring. I know they're always at Turtle Fest. We put signs up. They reached out to home associations. They reached out to apartments. We reached out to low-income apartments, the Housing Authority, just word of mouth. Word of mouth has been huge. They also went, the campus goes to opening, open nights or parent nights at like Southwest, Miller Heights, and sets up a table there that will, they'll register kids for pre-K. Trying to get, we send home flyers. So we're, we continuously recruit. And if, and the data is showing, if we can get them there, we can have them ready for kindergarten, and we're proud of that. They do have assessments at, nobody really likes assessments, but they do have them for four-year-olds. And this is kind of beginning-of-the-year data. So we do report to the state on our data for four areas. Those four areas are letter naming, vocabulary, phonemic awareness, and math. We use E-Circle, which is produced by the state. So it's a standard system across pre-Ks. So you can see where they come in, what's significant is where they leave at the end of the year. So that 29% letter naming turned into 89%. Vocabulary went from 62 to 94%. Phonemic awareness went from 50% to 93. Math went from 70 to 92. So we see significant gains from where they come in and where they leave. In addition to what we report to the state, which is these four areas, we also assess children on all of these areas. So anything from early writing, rapid vocabulary, syllabication, onset rhyming, rate counting, shape numbering, I mean, there's all of these different areas. And we do very well. We can, we average in the 90s, we have a few areas, operations is more difficult, and math, rhyming is challenging. But those are not reportable categories. Those are additional ones that we choose to track and to continue to focus on supporting our kids with. This doesn't happen without some absolutely phenomenal teachers. It just wouldn't happen without them. 100%. If you don't believe that, spend any length of time with 22 four-year-olds by yourself. Let me know how that works. So with that staff, we have 27 highly qualified staff. They are meeting what's called the Texas School Readiness Certification, which is some additional training through the state. 40% of them have their ESL certification, and 11% have a bilingual certification. We also have 28 highly qualified paraprofessionals who are side-by-side with those teachers all day long, every day. And they too do a tremendous job. I calculated roughly over the course of a year, and we probably have a little over 2,000 hours in professional development. When you look at how much time each of these teachers commits through the certification readiness, and then also our dedicated PD days on the staff, it's about 84 hours a year. And I've talked with several teachers new to our district, and they'll tell you our standards for pre-K are high, and they appreciate them. And then one of the, the other biggest component for success is family engagement. BECS does an outstanding job with family engagement. They run a lot of parent nights. They send books home. This was one of their math nights. They try to do activities that they can model for parents, that parents then can also replicate at home. You know, it's important for, we've got 493 parents, and this is their first experience with Belton ISD, unless they've had an older sibling. And so just welcoming them in and having them experience, have a good experience is important. So with that, we do have a family engagement plan. This is one of the areas required for pre-Ks, is that they come up with an engagement plan. And ours focuses on that family-to-family support, resources, and then skills to help students really learn those benchmarks. And so that is our pre-K program. It's going very, very well, and we're proud of the staff there and those kids.
Thank you. Does the board have any comments? Go ahead.
The day we got to go up and tour BECS was a lot of fun. Obviously, the academic catching up for these kids is important. My wife taught kindergarten for almost 20 years, so I know how important it is for these kids to close that gap when they get to kindergarten. But the thing that I really enjoyed in the three classrooms that we went into was, when we went in there, the teachers were working with the kids on how to treat each other. And they were saying these things over and over again about how to treat each other. And then they talked about the kids that weren't there, and the concern that the little kids had for their classmates that weren't there. So this little community that each classroom had, I felt that. And it really was neat to see that. So when you got that kind of buy-in from those kids, I mean, it really, we're teaching a culture to be nice to each other as well as the school parts of it. But that was the thing that struck me was that part of the curriculum. That was really cool. Y'all are doing a great job.
Thanks. I will pass it on to them. They work a lot on building community, and it is evident in those rooms when you see it.
Deanna, I would just say that from the, from the community standpoint and watching the development, you mentioned Scott and White earlier. The trust level in the community has really grown over the past couple of years as BECS has continued to develop. So families are just much more comfortable when a recommendation is made for pre-K, hands down, they're coming without reservation, and that's been a fun process to watch.
Oh, thanks for sharing that. I'll pass it on. It is very scary for a parent to turn their three- or four-year-old over to a school district, especially if that child has some special needs and considerations, that it's frightening. So I'll pass it on. Thank you. I'll follow up with you on the BECS capacity and then also the percent enrolled compared to the state, just what percent we are getting. I'll certainly follow that. Any other questions?
I don't believe so. Thank you. Appreciate that report.
Have a great night.
Okay, next item on our agenda, issues concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. I'll start on this end. Nope, got anything? Nope, nothing there. Then I'll share some, I'll pull up some dates from that nice list that's highlighted. We have a special board meeting tomorrow at 5:00. Then there's a Christmas break for the staff from December 20th through January 3rd. My son is super excited, super, super excited. And so then we also have, January 15th is the first date of file for anyone who's interested in, for the upcoming election, for the next board election, board member election. That'll be January 15th through February the 14th. That's the last date of file by 5:00. Our two trustees whose terms are expiring, Ms. Janet Lee and Mr. Ty Taggart, and I'm sure they'll make their declarations as they see fit. You can make them now if you want to. Okay, fine. All righty. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I go back? I do have an agenda request.
Okay. What do you have?
Could we have a report on the Swim Center, particularly the Tiger Shark program, the enrollment in the Tiger Shark program, and also what other community outreach are we offering through the Swim Center? And what do those numbers look like?
Any others? Okay. So the next item on the agenda tonight is a Level III grievance appeal of a parent of a Belton ISD student. The board will now adjourn to closed session to hear the Level III grievance, which is a matter involving student discipline to deliberate according to board policy FNG Local and to consult the district's attorney regarding the appeal as provided for in Sections 551.082 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. The board will currently adjourn and ask that you all who are not involved in this please step out. Appreciate you. Open session, the time is now 7:50 PM. Is the recorder on? Okay, thank you. Do I- Do I have a motion?
I move that the board dismiss the House grievance and uphold the administration's decision at Level 2.
Is there a second? All in favor? This motion has passed. The grievance is dismissed. For the record, this announcement of the board's decision is made in the presence of the complainant. This grievance appeal is concluded. We are adjourned, and the meeting is officially closed.